Great. Thank you to staff and thank you for your coming to Lake Forest.
Thank you for choosing Lake Forest.
Thank you, guys.
I know that part of the creek is really the most beautiful part of the creek.
Finally, there's some good use there.
All right, we are on to discussion items. The first one is review the comprehensive annual investment report and approve the proposed statement of investment policy. We'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. To provide a presentation tonight, we have Mia Correll Brown, Regional Director from Chandler Asset.
At this time, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may address the Commission regarding matters not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. If you'd like to make a comment, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the Commission Secretary. The speaker cards are available at the Agenda Review Table by the entrance. Madam Commission Secretary, have we received any speaker cards for non-agenized items?
We do have one request to speak, Dan Young.
Okay. Go ahead and come forward. Please give your name and your city of residence. We appreciate that.
I'm sorry?
I need your name and your city of residence.
I can't understand what you're asking me.
I need your name and your city of residence, where you live.
I can't understand anything you're saying. My city of residence?
And your name?
My name is Dan Young. Y-O-U-N-G. My residence is the city of Anaheim. I've listed a post office box and the Secretary has my, the information if you need to contact me for anything following this. I just have a statement I'd like to read. My name again is Dan Young. I'm speaking on behalf of a number of property and business owners in the city. It's my opinion that the city of Lake Forest does not have a massage business problem. Personal services do not automatically lead to illicit massage activity, and legitimate massage does not lead to prostitution more often than not. It's my opinion that the city of Lake Forest does not need more ordinances or to control prostitution. The current licensee ordinances are already the most draconian, punitive, complicated codes any normal person has ever seen. It occurred to me that much of the March 6 meeting was taken up by planning department staff trying to explain the massage ordinance to the planning commissioners. These ordinances are so complicated that it appears that even the city attorney struggles to explain them to planning commissioners and the planning department. What the city really needs is better code enforcement. It appears that the code enforcement department is trying to eradicate prostitution by attempting to force landlords to evict businesses that are suspect. The problem is that the landlords are powerless to evict businesses without cooperation of the city, and that the city is not providing that cooperation. It appears that the city is earnestly trying to rid the city of prostitution, but it is going about it the wrong way. It appears that the planning commission is also trying to rid the city of prostitution by denying new massage permits to legitimate businesses and revoking current massage permits by using creative applications of their own ordinances such as general welfare or public safety. I think it is unreasonable to believe hypnosis business is a threat to general welfare or health and safety of the residents of Lake Forest. I don't know if anyone here has ever seen the effects of PTSD. During my professional life, I have seen numerous occasions. I've seen how these victims spend the last days of their lives before they finally commit suicide to put themselves out of their misery. It appears that hypnotic wellness has a solution to this horrific illness. However, because the city determined that this legitimate solution involves touching a human with a plastic toy, hypnotic wellness is designated as a massage parlor, which more often than not is a front for prostitution, which fronts human trafficking, at least according to one of your commissioners. I think the commissioners on the chair would be wise to search their conscious and reconsider the devastating personal and financial effects of this denial to their permit on their owners, their residents, their reputation, the reputation of the city, and neighboring businesses. It also, I also think it would be wise to get a second opinion of the legal ramifications of your actions with specific attention to possible violations of the Fourteenth Amendment. This Fourteenth Amendment was added to the Constitution for this exact situation: unequal and discriminatory applications of the law. Chair and Commissioners, the business owners are a passionate, as passionate about helping their small personal services thrive as you are all about protecting the city's children.
Thank you very much, your time's up.
As a group, they have the conviction and the resources to follow that passion. It is my opinion that it would be more helpful to work together to attain each other's wishes despite the hospital treatment of some business owners.
Mr. Young, your time is up.
I have seen from some of the commission.
Excuse me, sir.
I assure you that they personally will stand ready to help and provide you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We'd like to move on. Do we have any other speaker cards?
That was the only one for non-agenized items.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on. We'd like to begin with our presentation items. Director Gail Ackerman will introduce our first item.
Yes, Nas, our Principal Civil Engineer is here this evening to give a brief overview of the capital improvement plan update for the quarter.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm back here today. You have the presentation as part of your package available to you. Just a quick summary of it. We have eight projects completed since the last time I was here. So I'm going to run through it pretty quick. It includes our geronium muilen slurry seal, Rockfield median, Tribuco Road trailer rehab, Tribuco Road resurfacing, Lake Forest TSSP, and civic center drainage improvement, and citywide non-functional turf removal study, as well as our annual street sidewalk repairs. So we have an additional eleven projects in construction, and one of the latest things we completed is today, we did the resurfacing at Kenyatta Road, so feel free to check it out on your way out of here. The contractor will be coming back tomorrow for additional cleanups, but we've done, we are done with resurfacing that road, and we're happy about that. We have ten other projects going on in construction, eleven projects in pre-construction, and we are moving along our projects in design. So I'm here to answer any question, if you have any, for the material that's been provided.
Okay, we don't have any other questions. Thank you very much, we appreciate your time tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this point, it's time for the Commission to consider matters listed under the consent calendar. Have we received any comments from members of the public on the consent calendar?
I have not received any.
Okay. Do any Commissioners wish to discuss the item, any items on the consent calendar? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote.
That motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Grable absent.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for item number three, and Director Gail Ackerman will introduce this item.
Yes, this item is a use permit to operate a hookah lounge in conjunction with an existing restaurant, and Ron Santos is here this evening with a presentation.
Good evening, Chair Ludden and members of the Planning Commission. So this item is an application for a use permit to operate a hookah lounge on an existing 2,041 square foot patio. The use is proposed in conjunction with an existing restaurant, Caspian Mediterranean Kitchen, which is located in a freestanding building in the Foothill Ranch Town Center near the intersection of Bake Parkway and Portola Parkway. So a hookah lounge is defined in the Lake Forest Municipal Code as an establishment where patrons purchase smoke or share tobacco from a hookah pipe or other apparatus. A hookah is a pipe used to smoke tobacco, which is comprised of a water-filled vase, long stem, and tubes from which smoke is inhaled. An example of a hookah pipe is pictured on the current slide. Hookah pipes are typically shared by multiple smokers at a table in a social setting. Per the zoning code, since 2012, the use is subject to approval of a use permit. Previous to 2012, the use was permitted by right in the city. Currently, there are three hookah lounges known to be operating in the city. In California, indoor smoking in workplaces had been prohibited statewide since 1995. However, the law includes certain exemptions, including for private smoking lounges, provided no food or beverages are served. This exemption allows for indoor hookah lounges, subject to local regulations and permitting requirements. The city's three existing hookah lounges are indoors. Additionally, while local governments may adopt more stringent non-smoking regulations, Lake Forest has not, nor have most Orange County cities. Private property owners may also restrict or limit smoking on their property, including at semi-public commercial properties. Irvine Spectrum, for example, restricts smoking. As proposed, hookah would be provided to restaurant customers either with food and/or beverage service, or without. The restaurant currently holds a Class 47 license from the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, which allows beer, wine, and distilled spirits to be served. Hours of operation proposed for a hookah service are 6:00 to 10:30 p.m. Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays, and 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. Based on the current seating capacity, the current seating arrangement, the patio provides capacity for 102 people. Seating capacity for an additional 132 is provided inside the restaurant. The subject property is designated Mixed Use 32 on the General Plan Land Use Map, which allows for a broad range of commercial uses as well as residential uses. The zoning designation is also Mixed Use 32, which permits the proposed hookah lounge, subject to approval of a use permit. The project does not present other zoning compliance issues, as the municipal code does not include any other standards or regulations specific to hookah. The patio is existing, and improvements to the property or restaurant are not proposed as part of this use permit. As discussed in the staff report, the restaurant is a standalone pad building in a large commercial shopping center. The patio is existing, approved for restaurant dining, and is not proposed to be expanded, altered, or to strictly serve hookah smokers. Instead, the hookah use would be effectively an accessory use to the restaurant, as opposed to solely a hookah lounge. As shown on this slide, the nearest commercial building is approximately 170 feet away in the same center, and the nearest residential property, which is an attached condominium development, is located approximately 164 feet away across Bake Parkway. Of note with respect to the patio is that the side that faces Bake Parkway is partially walled, as pictured in the staff report. As part of the application processing, the Orange County Sheriff's Department and Orange County Fire Authority reviewed the application and plans. Orange County Sheriff's Department had no comments, and OCFA recommended standard conditions of approval related to the handling of hookah and a requirement to submit detailed architectural plans for the review of exiting. In response to the public notice of this hearing, the city received eighteen public comment letters, fourteen in opposition to the use permit and four in support. The opposition letter cited concerns regarding secondhand smoke and loud and late-at-night music. In addition, the applicant submitted three letters of his own in support of approval. The restaurant has a significant and recent code enforcement history that includes complaints to code enforcement and the Sheriff's Department, all regarding loud music and noise. Three of those complaints were received over this past weekend and referenced loud outdoor entertainment on the patio, which is a violation of the business, the business's entertainment permit. The code enforcement history includes the recent issuance of three notices of violations and two citations, with fines to the restaurant owner totaling $400, and a fourth notice of violation is in the mail. In addition, both code enforcement and planning staff had had numerous direct contacts with the applicant since the end of November of last year, at which time the applicant was advised to immediately cease hookah smoking, pending approval of a use permit, and to cease live entertainment occurring in violation of the code and/or the live entertainment permit. During this period, so that is since the end of November, the city verified five separate incidents of the violations I described. Related to the code issues described, nine of the letters received in opposition to the use permit cited loud music and noise as a concern. Staff also prepared a detailed timeline of the recent code enforcement history, which was placed on the dais before the start of the meeting. Mr. Winston Carruga, code enforcement supervisor, is in attendance this evening, and he's available should the Commission have any questions related to code enforcement matters. Staff prepared a draft resolution for approval of the use permit, which was provided as an attachment to the staff report. The resolution is based on the analysis in the report and cites such factors as consistency with the general plan and zoning, the distances between the proposed use in the nearest residential and commercial buildings, and the absence of any Lake Forest codes restricting smoking outdoors. However, in light of the recent history of code violations and failure to comply, despite numerous warnings and citations, most notably the violations that occurred this past weekend, staff also prepared a draft resolution for denial, which was placed on the dais and made available to the public this evening. The resolution includes findings that the addition of hookah smoking would intensify and exacerbate unlawful conditions at the site, conditions which are incompatible with surrounding uses, and furthermore, that approval of the use permit would create conditions that are contrary to the general welfare. Staff recommends that the Commission consider this alternative resolution in the context of the broader history of code enforcement violations recently, and complaints received, as well as the eighteen letters received from the public and three from the applicant concerning this use permit application, and additionally, any public testimony which may be provided this evening. That concludes staff's presentation on this item. The applicant is available, should the Commission have any questions, and of course, I'm available for any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron. Have we received any comments from members of the public on this matter, other than the arguments that have been presented to us so far?
I did receive six requests to speak, including one from the applicant. Would you like me to call those?
Why don't we take those now?
Essie Nabi, followed by Lawrence Hudark.
If you'd please give me your name and your city of residence.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present my case. My name is Essie Nabi, and I am the owner and operator of Caspian Mediterranean Kitchen, located at 26772 Portola Parkway in City of Lake Forest. Caspian is proposing a designated hookah service area within our restaurant patio to meet the increasing demand from our customers. Our aim is to provide a comfortable and socially engaging space where guests can enjoy hookah personally while dining at our restaurant. Many of our guests and patrons have requested hookah service, as it is both a cultural and social activity. In many cultures, offering hookah to guests is a gesture of warmth and hospitality. Hookah has always become a cross-cultural, social experience enjoyed by people from diverse backgrounds. Unlike traditional hookah lounges, which often cater primarily to a male clientele and permit games such as poker and other card games, Caspian hookah service will be integrated into our patio in a way that complements our family-friendly environment. At this point, I would like really to apologize, Ron, Gail, Mrs. Ackerman, Amy, and also the panel. I would like to apologize for a violation concerning wedding ceremony in our patio, which was booked on August 2024 of last year. I did that so to avoid the lawsuit that was initiated by the customer and also spoiling a happy event, and for that, I sincerely apologize. That happened Saturday, past Saturday. We had planned from previous years, because our patio, this was a wedding event, we had, we were supposed to have entertainment till 12:00 p.m. Because of them, I asked them, okay, did a compromise that they can do lawsuit or get away with it. I stopped the entertainment in patio by around 10:20, because our hours was, weekend was till 11:00. But I had asked them, okay, I compromised, you have the wedding, but that's the reason. Just want to clarify. At this time, I'm humbly requesting your approval of our permit to serve hookah. I would like to thank you again for hearing my request and your continued support. I would like to submit set of supporting document to my respectfully Planning Commission to my request.
Thank you very much. Here's our next speaker.
Thank you, sir. If there is any question, I'm available.
Thank you for coming.
Lawrence Hudark, followed by Malika Malali.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Lawrence Hudark. I'm an attorney. I've been in practice for 43 years. I represent Essie Nabi. I represent Caspian Kitchen. I have reviewed the document, the alternative document that was provided, alternative resolution denying the application. I have reviewed the document and noticed there's a lot of inconsistencies within the document. I'd like to address, one, the issue of noise. You've seen pictures of the patio, though it says it's a partial wall around the patio, the patio is not enclosed. But if you look at the picture, there is a solid wall on the end of the patio that faces all the apartments. That's, reason for that wall was to cut down on the noise. If you look at the apartment complexes, they're, they're regular buildings. There's windows, there's doors. We've ensured that the decimal at the times that music was played was inside the patio would be no more than 55 decimals. We actually had a meter that tested it. That's inside. If you look at the patio, there's a trellis above it, which absorbs the sound. It also says that there's a wall around the patio of 42 inches. That's not correct. It's actually 52 inches, and then there's trellises and plants on top of that. It is well-known fact that vegetation will also absorb sound. The fact that people across the street, inside their apartments, are saying that this noise level is too much is not a credible fact. The wall absorbs, the trellises absorbs. We've done a test in the middle of the street and found decimal numbers of 20 percent, or 20 decimals. How they can hear loud noises, we have no idea. As far as the smoke goes, we've done tests on the smoke. The smoke from the hookah rises up, it's absorbed by the items, the trellises, et cetera, and if that smoke traveled 170 feet across the street, one, they're all in apartments, and two, the smoke would be 90 feet in the air. Yes, we're concerned that children don't inhale the smoke. They can't. It's not there. This document, where people are contending that Caspian's is not a good community member, is wrong. It's written by people, for whatever reason, who don't want the restaurant to succeed. We understand there was a restaurant there before that a lot of people had problems with, and we think that it's the same thing. Caspian has been around in Orange County for 30 years. It has been a community member for many years. Even the local sheriff, a few years ago, had a fundraiser at Caspian. Caspian is a good community person, and it will help the community, even the surrounding neighbors. They pay taxes, they employ people, and we ask that it be approved. It's a good addition to our community. Red means thank you.
Thank you very much for respecting the time. Thank you for coming.
Malika Malali, followed by Jessica Valenzuela.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to express my strong support for Caspian Restaurant, not only as a thriving local business, but as a cherished cultural hub in our community. Caspian is more than just one place to eat. It's a place where families gather, friends connect, and traditions are kept alive. From its authentic Persian Middle Eastern cuisine to its warm welcoming atmosphere, Caspian represents the kind of small business that enriches our city, and one of the traditions they proudly offer is hookah. Hookah is a cultural practice. Many people are opposed to hookah out of ignorance, simply. Hookah is not about encouraging harmful behavior or disrupting the peace. It is about connection and about sharing stories, laughter, and time with loved ones. I personally live right across from the restaurant. I have never experienced any smoke smell. My bedroom is exactly across from the restaurant. I have a picture that I took outside of my bedroom window that I would like to present to the committee as, as proof of what I'm saying. As to the noise, I personally have never experienced any noise traveling to my window or to my neighbors. So hookah is just simply being discriminated against by the people who wrote the 14 opposing letters. To be clear, Caspian is not a nightclub. It's not creating noise, crime, or any danger to the public. They are offering hookah responsibly within legal guidelines to our city and in designated areas that are safe and controlled. There's no evidence that this is causing harm to the neighborhood, only speculations and misunderstanding. In fact, supporting Caspian and their cultural offerings sends a powerful message that we in Lake Forest value diversity, that we welcome traditions that around, that come from around the world. I personally come from a country called Morocco, and I am a proud American, a law-abiding citizen who pays taxes, and I strongly, strongly support Caspian. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming to speak with us. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Jessica Valenzuela, followed by Nicole Bersick.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak. I am here to voice my opposition to this proposed amendment. I am a resident in the condo, it's not apartments, but condo community directly across the street, as noted, 164 feet. I am a mom of one young child with another on the way, so concerns about noise and secondhand smoke, both are very relevant to me. I can attest that I have personally been impacted. I can attest that I have personally been impacted by the noise, including waking up my young toddler because it is so loud. This last weekend, on Saturday, my walls were vibrating because of the noise. Having young children and the concern about secondhand smoke, I really appreciate hearing that there are efforts that have been put in place to try to minimize it. But if the wind is blowing the right way, it's not contained, and we know that there are risks to secondhand smoke. I don't want to subject my kids to that, and I also don't want to have to be forced to always keep my windows closed because of that. Additionally, as a property owner, I am concerned about the potential for resale value. If this passes, I'm locked in, but when I go to sell, somebody very well might choose not to buy there because of noise concerns, because of secondhand smoke concerns. The noise is also not just a concern from the business itself, but from the increased traffic and the increased auto noise that is the potential to come from that. I have been a customer at Caspian. I appreciate the atmosphere that they offer. I have enjoyed multiple meals there. It's not that I don't like this business. It's not that I don't want them to succeed. But I do have concerns about the potential for increased noise and secondhand smoke, and I kindly ask you to consider that and to vote no for this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Nicole Bersik, followed by Catherine Otis.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am also speaking in opposition to the proposal. I am a resident of El Paseo, the condominiums right across the street from Caspian. I can one hundred percent confirm that I have had multiple issues with the noise, including over-white noise machines, waking up my baby here this past Saturday. But most of those noise concerns happened prior to me filing a code enforcement complaint in December, where it was found that Caspian was not only offering live entertainment outdoors without a permit and also already offering hookah without a permit. Since then, the noise really has decreased, and it's very much appreciated. This past weekend was definitely a exception. You know, obviously, as the business owner said, sounded like there was a reason for that. But I do think that no longer offering hookah has contributed to the lessened nighttime noise. And I do have a real concern about offering hookah until eight, I'm sorry, ten-thirty at night on weeknights, let alone on the weekends. I just moved to this community in August, so I definitely have no issues with the previous restaurant that may or may not have been there. I have no ill will towards Caspian. I hope that they, you know, succeed. Their business is beautiful, and I definitely appreciate the, you know, different offerings that they provide. But I do not think that, you know, it is a good family addition to offer an outdoor hookah lounge right across the street. Whatever patio, trellis, wall they have, it does not block noise. And therefore, I do not think that while the risk of hookah smoke would be significant, you know, we have vulnerable populations. I have an eight-month-old and a two-year-old, and I don't, and our patio directly faces Caspian. So I do not want them to have to continuously potentially breathe in secondhand hookah smoke. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Our final speaker is Catherine Otis.
Good evening, Chair and fellow commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am in opposition to the proposed use permit for the hookah lounge. There is concern about secondhand smoke, but given the distance and other speakers have commented on that, I won't belabor that point. The, the concern for me is more about the noise and, and allowing the hookah lounge in an outdoor patio with over, I think they said over a hundred available seats out there is going to increase noise. That is the concern. We, I live directly across the street. I keep my windows closed, all the windows in the house closed at night. And as other people have mentioned this past Saturday, it was like EDM music. The walls were thumping. It was going on and on till late. So I am concerned about the noise and just the, that the city would consider issuing a new permit for another entertainment component to this restaurant when they're not necessarily fully complying with the entertainment permit they already have with respect to noise. At the very least, I would humbly suggest that, that this be continued until such time as a acoustical study can be done during peak entertainment hours so that, you know, you can really see the data on the noise, because it is an issue. And this is with, like I said, windows closed, and this goes on, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And it has been less since the, since last December, but it's still an issue. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. Do we have any other public comments?
That concludes our public comment.
Okay. Then I'll bring the matter back up here. Would any of the commissioners like to comment?
I have a question, sure. A few questions for staff anyways. In regards to the presentation, Ron, by the time the agenda report was published, OCSD had no comments in regards to the hookah lounge. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Have we asked OCSD since the closure of that by way of what occurred this weekend if they have any comments regarding the business and the hookah component?
We, we did contact the Sheriff's Department to inquire about calls for service that had been received by the Sheriff's Department, which the city wouldn't, city staff wouldn't necessarily be aware of, as opposed to calls straight to code enforcement. They advised of the two calls that related to Saturday this past weekend and that prior to that, the only call for service was received in November.
Thank you. In regards to whether entertainment is allowed on the patio right now, is it permitted to do any entertainment on the patio?
Entertainment, live entertainment is prohibited on the patio.
Would that include a DJ performance with music and crowd noise?
Pursuant to the municipal code, a DJ is considered live entertainment. So yes.
Regardless of if they had the reservation booked a year ago, six months ago, two minutes ago, it's always been not permitted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Staff, the, the residents across the street, are they condominiums or are they apartments? I think it's important to get that information.
They're condominiums.
Condominiums, okay. So they're owned, individual-owned residences?
Correct.
Currently, by way of what they're permitted right now, is smoking allowed on the patio? Hookah smoke, is that permitted on the patio?
Hookah is not permitted on the patio without a use permit, and of course, that's why we're here this evening.
Okay. Can I ask some questions to our code enforcement supervisor? Good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations on the promotion, by the way. You're gonna earn it tonight. So here we go.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Were you involved in any of these? Are you aware of the timeline that was provided to us on the last page of this, one of the packets?
Yeah, Commissioner Verwak, I prepared this timeline. I've been quite heavily involved in the enforcement at this location.
Okay. So back in December twenty twenty-four, it looks like there was a complaint regarding private parties with loud music continuing past one-thirty to two A. M. in the morning? Is that accurate?
Yes.
And then there was a notice of violation that followed after the investigation revealed unauthorized live entertainment and hookah activity that was not permitted, either of which?
Correct, yes.
You guys took the proactive approach in meeting with the business owners and staff and advised them of how they could remedy this to get it within our, our rules and laws here in Lake Forest?
Yeah, I believe that first meeting actually was initiated by the business owner.
Okay.
So they were actually proactive in that regard. But yeah, the, the, the idea of the meeting was to come to consensus of how compliance could be achieved.
Wonderful. And then in February, after that meeting took place and information was provided to the business, that there was surveillance observed of continuing to ongoing unauthorized live entertainment and hookah activities, both of which are not permitted?
Correct, yeah.
Citations were issued?
Yes. So an initial citation, which is the general process, after a notice, we then start to issue monetary fines.
Following that fine, then they decided to submit an application for review that initiated the planning process in March. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And then I believe staff has the ability to review and approve live entertainment permits for indoor entertainment?
Yes.
Not for outdoor entertainment?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, great. Then the business owner met with staff, code staff again, to ask for the citation reversal and asked if they could get that removed. And then you guys also took the approach to warn them about further fines and potential complications with non-compliance?
Correct. And may, may I just make one correction there?
Absolutely.
Chairman, sorry, Commissioner. So staff can review outdoor entertainment permits too. But that is a separate, different permit. The actual application in this case was specifically for indoor entertainment. So I just want to make sure.
Nope, got it. Understood. And then in April, there was observation of patrons smoking hookah on the patio?
Yes. So again, we, we now, after further warnings and initiations and conversations, we did observe hookah activity again.
Okay. And then after that investigation, a second citation was issued?
Correct.
And then here's the kicker. After this was agendized for us for consideration with staff recommendation, which I do not agree with the initial recommendation, even after that fact, with all of these things already occurring, the continued disregard of the rules and regulations of the city, meeting with staff to get a road forward on how they could remedy it and continue to be a good upstanding business in the community, they throw a live DJ party this weekend, this past weekend.
Yeah, so I received those complaints Monday. I did see videos from members of the public that showed this activity. I have issued a further notice on this incident, and we're gonna take action on that live entertainment permit.
So the reason that, that the applicant mentioned today was that it was based on potential litigation from a previous booking back in twenty twenty-four with disregard to the residents, with disregard to our processes, with disregards to our laws and our rules, and the fourteen individuals that submitted individual emails and letters, and then the testimony today. Disregarded all that.
Commissioner, I, yeah, I, I can't speak for the, the business owner, but it appears that our efforts to get them to comply were not all followed. I think that's something that the business owner would have to answer to himself.
All right. I have no more questions at this point. I'll save my comments.
Commissioner Standard, or Vice Chair Standard, do you have any questions?
I do have a question. On the dates of February second and the twenty-eighth, was the one, was the February second a warning and that the business owner, the business was provided, and then the twenty-eighth was a second occurrence?
No, so we, we were carrying out surveillance over that period. We, we have nighttime evening staff, so as they were able, they were carrying out surveillance on the business. So it's the two times in that month that they observed, and based on those observations, we issued the citation.
Okay, thank you. One more question. In regard to this past weekend and with this being agendized and then there being a violation this weekend with the, according to the applicant, the potential for litigation from the, the contract or the violation of the contract that they had signed, did the applicant reach out to the city to communicate the situation and make the city aware of it?
Chair, I did not receive anything. Again, I can't speak for my other colleagues, but code enforcement themselves did not receive any notification or anything like that, yeah.
Likewise, for the department, planning in general, we, we did not receive any notice.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, I had questions regarding the actual alternative resolution and the issues that the gentleman had brought up with regards to the specificity around, you know, like height of walls and things of that nature. Is it because we pulled numbers based off of what we have on our permits and plans that are filed with the city? Or I'm just trying to understand where those discrepancies are and if legally that's something that has to be addressed in the alternative resolution?
Chair and Commissioner, those, those figures with respect to the height of the hedge and the wall were approximations. They were not matters that were deemed relevant to the application in any significant manner. So staff did not go out there with the tape measure and measure the hedge because it was, this was not a landscaping project that was at issue. So with respect to the, the resolution, staff does not believe that, that there's any significance to the minor inaccuracies that may exist with respect to the height of the hedge or, or the railing along the perimeter of the wall. Also with respect to the violations that the, the initial comments that were received, I just want to emphasize that the, the city did not issue citations or notice of violation regarding exceedance of the noise limits. The violations were for hookah without a use permit and live entertainment, without a live entertainment permit, and then later live entertainment and violation of the live entertainment permit.
And for our attorney, would you agree with that assessment as to the discrepancies and the need to address them within the alternative?
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, as Mr. Santos mentioned, those are approximations. I think the point in the resolution is that it's not an enclosed space. And so the idea is that a reason why, you know, live entertainment is not allowed on the outdoor patio is it's not enclosed. That's only allowed inside the building with doors shut. And so the idea is if a patio, which is an outdoor patio, is not enclosed, which I think, you know, the applicant has actually conceded that it's not enclosed, then the noise will emanate and the nearest residential area is less than two hundred feet away.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other commissioners have comments or questions? I do have one question for the owner. If the owner could come back, please.
Yes, sir.
In light of the comments that the residents surrounding your restaurant have made, and the city's feeling that if we approve your, your hookah permit, that probably the hookah permit would, well, if we allow you to have hookah, I think the position of a lot of people is that it would escalate the noise and the, and the disturbance that we all have a history of with your restaurant. And I just, I guess my question is this.
Yes.
What would you do, presuming we approve this permit, to make sure that we don't have any of these issues going forward? Because right now, you don't have a very good record. And I don't know how we, we necessarily could trust you, but I want to hear how you would fix this problem. So we don't hear any more residents' comments, and Winston doesn't have to come visit your restaurant anymore.
Yes, sir. First of all, I would like to thank everybody, all my neighbors that spoke and regarding Caspian pro and against. I know everybody's concerned about the safety for everything. At the same time, I used to be in City of Irvine for over, actually, the restaurant been around since nineteen eighty-two. I took over around two thousand. And basically, my, I've been in home health, hospice business. That's my core business. And restaurant business, the only reason I got involved because was I was trying to help our culture more of a cultural event. Then, sorry, I'm taking a little time. When I closed Caspian, When I closed Caspian, then we moved to City of Lake Forest, almost three years ago, September would become three years ago. And what I did, trying to bring a great operation from City Irvine to our City of Lake Forest. I don't want to say we are the finest restaurant in City of Lake Forest, but we are one of the finest, probably. But my whole image and goal was to have an environment inviting to everybody. We have Mediterranean food, we offer, the entertainment even we offer, it's very limited time. And the patio at the original, I wasn't aware of all these rules and regulation. It's my ignorant, please, as I mentioned, I apologize to everybody. But it was my ignorant, because when I was in City of Irvine, we had both hookah and entertainment. But there was no license requirement, there wasn't a lot of things. So when we moved here, this happened now. I would like to say to all of you, I know everybody, my neighbors, my lawyers, everybody around me. I would like to say that as someone that is a member of this community, as someone that has done a lot for our community in politics, in health, and currently in hospitality. I've done a lot for Arkham. My whole goal was to have something for cultural for everybody. But in front of everybody, I will promise, I don't know if it means anything. You can search my reputation, sir. I promise everybody that there wouldn't be any problem with noise. I honestly spent a lot of money to create the wall, to buy sun blankets. I swear, Saturday night, I went with, to measure, because I bought that tree of them on the facility to make sure the noise doesn't travel. I got one in my hand, and I go by the wall, we're facing the apartments, shaking. It was around 23. But their patio is facing the shopping center, that was about 50, because I tried to, I go there, it's a 55. But sorry, I don't mean to extend it. I just want to say, not an excuse, but just trying to express myself. And I really apologize. But if you would give me the chance, I would promise that this wouldn't happen. And I, I don't know what else to say. But it's, the whole thing I'm doing is for community, honestly. Because a lot of hookah shops, when you go to the hookah shop, oh, sorry.
Thank you, you've answered my question, I appreciate it.
Sorry.
That's fine, thank you. You can return your seat.
Chair, if I can have some comments, please.
Certainly.
Thank you. So I appreciate Caspian, I appreciate the food, I've attended it, I've enjoyed it as well, like many others. But I will also, and I appreciate the diversity that you bring into the community as well, as we have a different diversity in Lake Forest and in Foothill Ranch than we've had, you know, times before. However, part of that comes with the respect to everybody, including the residents. It comes with the respect to our code enforcement officers. And it's been very clear to me by way of the testimony from our code enforcement supervisor, the materials that have been provided from staff, the testimony and the public comments, that you guys disregard the rules. You've disregarded it consistently and on a number of different occasions. And for that very reason, I cannot support this in our community. There's not a good track record, and I can't look at the rest of the residents, the people that I represent, and with good faith, say that I'm gonna give you a fourth and fifth chance. So I vote that we move forward and make a motion to move with the alternative denial for the use permit.
I would like to make one suggestion at this point. Since staff has provided an alternate resolution, would you like some time to, based on the public input, would you like to do anything to alter that resolution before we vote on it? On either op, on either resolution?
Chair Ludden, if there's any revision to the resolution, to the findings, or if there was testimony or comments amongst the Commission, which the Chair of the Commission would like incorporated into the resolution, we certainly can do that. We can, we can take notes on specifically what, if the changes are minor, or if the Chair of the Commission would like to see those incorporated into the document itself, and we certainly can quickly handle that. And if the Commission were to take a break and give us the opportunity for that.
Would any of the Commissioners like to see an alteration to either one of the resolutions? Are you happy with them the way they are?
I'm happy with the way it's written.
I think we need to clarify which resolution we're voting on, whether it's the original resolution provided by the staff or the alternate resolution which was provided tonight. Based on your motion, I presume you're looking at?
Yeah, I moved the-
The alternate resolution?
For the denial. That was what my motion was for.
Is there a second for the alternate resolution?
Might I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay, great. I personally love Caspian, I love having them there, I love the diversity. I'm excited to try the restaurant, I haven't had a chance to go there yet. But I do know that as we've approved restaurants, I remember when it was the Chili's and it got changed to the Raising Canes, we had extensive conversations even about the noise levels from the single speaker at the drive-through, and if it was going to be okay to approve that because of the community across the street. So I do think, I, you know, I do think that doing anything to draw more things to the outside patio is what brings me hesitancy as far as like the noise levels are concerned. I have no issue with live entertainment and hookah. If it was fully enclosed indoors, that's a different story. It's the fact that it's outside and it's not fully walled in, and there is residential across the street, and we are working in a, you know, that kind of environment. So for that reason, I want to second the denial.
And Chair and Commissioner, if I may add, for the motion to enclose the public hearing as well.
Okay. At this point, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearings. We will close the public hearing at this time. And we will now vote on this motion.
And a yes vote is for the denial, correct?
Yes, let's vote is for the denial.
The motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Grable absent.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed to item number four. Paperwork figured out here. Go ahead, Gail.
Okay, item four, is a use permit, or is a zoning code amendment to amend various sections of the zoning code related to regulations for cyber cafes and thrift stores? And Jennifer Mansour is here this evening with a staff report.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, the item is for a new zoning code amendment related to cyber cafes and thrift stores. I'm gonna start with cyber cafes. In 2003, the Lake Forest City Council approved an ordinance regulating cyber cafes. Per the original staff report, cyber cafes were an emerging form of business that catered to youth who are interested in playing computer games. At the time, cyber cafes in North Orange County and Los Angeles County reported experiencing escalation in crimes directly or indirectly related to these cyber cafes. The city council adopted a cyber cafe ordinance as a precautionary measure to ensure the continued safety of the community. The ordinance created Chapter 5.34 of the city's municipal code, which requires all cyber cafes to obtain an annual license and meet 15 different operational requirements. In the two decades since the cyber cafe ordinance was first enacted, the nature of cyber cafes has changed. This is due to increased accessibility of high-speed internet from homes and cellphones. Furthermore, the crime that was associated with cyber cafes in North Orange County and Los Angeles County did not occur in Lake Forest. The overregulation of these businesses is creating unintended barriers, which cause additional capital and operating costs for these businesses. As such, to remove the unintended barriers to these cities' businesses, city staff is recommending the elimination of Chapter 5.34, which would remove the cyber cafe annual license and related regulations. The removal of these requirements was reviewed and approved by the city's Chief of Police Services. Now, the Planning Commission's purview is to provide a recommendation only on zoning code amendments, which is Title IX. As such, the elimination of Chapter 5.34, which is in Title V, is not under the purview of the Planning Commission. However, the elimination of this chapter triggered recommended changes to the city zoning code. These related zoning code amendments are within the purview of the Planning Commission. As drafted in the zoning code amendment, city staff is recommending that we replace the outdated term cyber cafe with digital entertainment. The zoning code amendment includes a new definition for digital entertainment. And additionally, the amendment includes revisions to the definitions of cyber cafe, internet cafe, and a new definition for esports that refers back to this definition of digital entertainment. The amendment also includes revisions to the city's two land use matrices for non-residential districts and mixed-use zoning districts. The row related to cyber cafes in both matrices is proposed to be deleted, and a new row for digital entertainment is proposed to be added. The zoning districts where digital entertainment is allowed is consistent with where cyber cafes were allowed. The only change is the footnote referencing the permit and regulations in Chapter 5.34 have been eliminated. All right, the second part of this ordinance is zoning regulations for thrift stores. In September of 2024, the state passed Assembly Bill 2632, which imposed new limitations on how cities may regulate thrift stores. The Assembly Bill prohibits the city from treating a thrift store differently than a retail store, with the exception of certain design standards that are prescribed by the bill. In response to the Assembly Bill, the city is proposing modifications to our zoning code to comply with the state law. As drafted in the code amendment, the definitions of donation center attended and thrift store have been revised to be consistent with the new law. Additionally, the thrift store row in the city's two land use matrices were revised to be consistent with retail business. Additionally, a new footnote was added to each land use matrix referencing a new thrift store code section. This new code section includes three new design standards intended to ensure that all donations for the business are taken inside the building and that no donations are left outside the building. These code sections will facilitate code enforcement process to ensure outdoor storage of donations doesn't occur at the thrift stores. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution, recommending city council approval of this zoning code amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Have we received any comments from members of the public on this item?
I have not received any.
Very good. Do any members of the Commission have any questions or comments for discussion?
I'd move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote. I'll close the public hearing.
That motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Grable absent.
We'll now open the public hearing for item number five. Director Gail Ackerman, introduce this item.
Yes, this is a use permit to allow retail sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits with late-night hours. And Connor Musler was here just a minute ago. Connor Musler will be here to give a staff report.
We can wait patiently. Okay, Connor, you're on.
Okay, so, good evening Chair and Commissioners. Out of breath running back, but this item before you tonight is a use permit for alcohol sales in a late-night use at 7-Eleven in the Forest Ridge Plaza. The subject property is located at 24366 Maryland Boulevard, near the intersection of Maryland Boulevard and Ridge Route Drive. The 7-Eleven has operated this location with alcoholic beverage sales since 1993. The sale of alcohol predates the 2015 zoning code update requiring a use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption. Furthermore, the 7-Eleven operates for 24 hours a day and has done so continuously since prior to the 2012 zoning code update requiring a use permit for late-night uses, which are businesses that are open between 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM. The business is thus considered to be legal nonconforming as it relates to the sale of alcoholic beverages in 24-hour operation. Pursuant to the Lake Forest Municipal Code, a legal nonconforming use is allowed to continue to exist. However, any modifications to a nonconforming use shall be subject to the regulations as presently adopted. The applicant now proposes to expand the business offerings to include distilled spirits, thus requiring a use permit application. The floor plan shown on the screen depicts the areas where existing beer, wine, and wine-based beverages are offered for sale, shown in red, and the proposed distilled spirits cabinet, shown in blue. The distilled spirits would be located in a four-foot-by-two-foot cabinet located behind the register, accessible to store employees only. The photos on the slide show the existing alcohol coolers and shelf space and the area behind the counter where the locked distilled spirits cabinet is proposed to be located. The city's zoning code definition of alcohol sales for off-site consumption include two alcoholic beverage control or ABC license types, a type 20, which is only for beer and wine, and type 21, which is for beer, wine, and distilled spirits. As of April 16th, there were 29 type 20 licenses and 21 type 21 licenses within the city. Within the census tract that 7-Eleven is located in, there are four type 20 licenses and two type 21 licenses. Should the Planning Commission approve this use permit, the existing type 20 license for the 7-Eleven will be canceled upon issuance of the type 21 license. Table two on your screen shows the proposed ABC license numbers reflecting the cancellation of 7-Eleven's type 20 license and new type 21 license. We just took one from the top and put it down on the bottom. In past use permit applications for retail alcohol sales that the Planning Commission has reviewed, findings were required that were specific to determinations of public convenience or necessity, or PCNs. These findings were established in accordance with the city council's policy for the review of requests for alcohol sales and PCNs. The applicant has confirmed with ABC that a PCN is not required if the existing type 20 license is canceled. The applicant will be canceling the type 20 license should this use permit be approved and a type 21 license issued by ABC. Therefore, the findings are limited to those found within the zoning code as shown to the right of the screen. This slide provides a summary of the findings required by code and how the findings were made based on a review of the application materials by the Chief of Police Services and by city staff. Should the use permit be approved, the use would need to be maintained in substantial conformance with the plans as approved by the Planning Commission, and includes proposed conditions such as no changes to the location of the alcohol, maintaining security, and ABC training for employees. It is important to note that should the Planning Commission not approve this use permit, the 7-Eleven would still be able to sell beer and wine in accordance with their existing type 20 license. The application also includes a request for the continued 24-hour operation of the 7-Eleven. The Chief of Police Services reviewed the application and did not have any concerns with the location, floor plan, or security measures at the business. Accordingly, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving a use permit for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits, and the use permit for late-night hours as conditioned. The applicant for this project is in the audience tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you very much for your report. Have you received any comments from members of the public on this matter?
I've received two requests to speak. The first one is the applicant, Bruce Evans.
Mr. Evans, please come forward and give your name and city of residence, please.
Good evening, I'm Bruce Evans, I represent 7-Eleven. I live in Sierra Madre, California.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, go ahead, since you're the applicant, you have more time. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll start by thanking Mr. Musler and the Planning Department. They've been tremendous. They've been tremendous to work with throughout this process, very interactive, very responsive, and we appreciate that. I have with me tonight Parvinder Betty to the left in the black baseball cap there. He is a civil engineer, and he is a new franchisee in the 7-Eleven system. He purchased this business in January of this year as he transitions or his career in engineering winds down. I don't have anything to add to the staff report with respect to the sale of proposed distilled spirits at this location other than to emphasize this is what we believe is a very modest request, less than 2% of the floor space allocated alcohol, even with the addition of the spirits. It's a four-by-two-foot shelf approximately behind the counter in a locked cabinet. So this is not going to be a game changer for the store. It is not going to change the nature of the store. I want to use my time to focus on one proposed condition, which we're having some heartburn over. We got the conditions on Monday, and we were surprised to see the condition requiring two employees from 12:00 midnight to 5:00 a.m. I totally get it why that condition would be a standard for new businesses, but we have a 31-year track record at this business, and throughout that time, they typically have one employee during the late-night hours. We have no history of problems at this location, no police concerns. So the request would be not to include the additional requirement for two employees. Connor and I spoke a couple of times this week about it. It's my impression from talking to staff that it's the standard condition for new businesses, so they're keeping it in there, but that staff does not see a compelling need for the condition at this particular business, given the track record. So if the commission is inclined to impose the condition and still has concerns, a couple of requests. Number one, we could offer to lose two hours of alcohol sales, and we'd actually cut the alcohol sales off at 12:00 midnight instead of what they are allowed until 2:00 a.m. right now. The franchisee is very comfortable with that. This is Lake Forest. It's pretty sleepy during those hours. So that would be something we can do, and then we would not be adding a new use during the late-night hours. The other request would be that if the commission is inclined to impose that condition, then we would request language that's already in the first resolution be added to the second resolution for the 24-hour use that makes clear that the two-employee requirement is actually tied to this business obtaining the 21 liquor license. Because what I don't want to do is put the client in a worse, long-term position if we decide we just don't want the liquor license. It's just not worth it with the additional cost. We're not expecting a huge surge in sales with the limited spirits. So if we have to have the condition, we'll do our best and find a way to make it work. But I'd like a way out for the client if they just decide, hey, we can't do it, we're not going to take that liquor license. I don't think that will happen, but I want to make sure we have the option because it was unexpected in this case. A couple of things why we would suggest that that condition is not needed in this case. Again, the track record, when Parvinder bought this location in January, 7-Eleven has its own camera system inside and out the store. Parvinder installed 16 high-tech digital cameras inside and outside. When you walk in that store now, and I was there just this afternoon, you will see two monitors that the clerk can see, which depict various views of the inside of the premises, including the alcohol area and the outside. What you see in the big monitor when you walk in is a large color monitor, and you see yourself as you walk into the location on that monitor, making very clear that you, as a customer, are being recorded for everyone's safety and that everybody should be a good citizen. The store has a panic button, which to my knowledge has not been used in a long time. Parvinder's never used it, but if a clerk felt that there was some safety issue, he can hit that panic button, and that would summon the local police. The other thing that they have is they have a custom. They have a high-tech safe. It has an automatic cash drop that you feed the cash in. It sort of sucks it in like a money machine, and they don't keep more than $150 of cash in the register. So again, we're hoping to go forward with the approval. We just have some concerns about that two-employee condition at night. Again, we get it why it's in there as a standard, but I would submit that this is a unique case and a 31-year track record of that condition not being necessary. So if you're inclined to impose it, we could cut the alcohol sales off at 12:00 midnight to avoid it, or if you impose it, at least give us the option of walking away if we conclude in a week or two, we just can't do it. Again, I don't think that's going to happen, but since we just got the condition on Monday, we've got to run some numbers on that. I don't have to answer any questions.
Do we have any other public comments?
We have one additional request to speak from Alex Tu.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner and Chair, thank you for allowing me to speak in here. My name is Alex Tu, and I'm resident of Lake Forest. And our property is nearby the shopping center. And I'm here to represent the neighbors around the property. I work for the construction company in the daytime. I work really hard to make a meal for my family. So when I go home at night, I wish to have a safe and peaceful house I can go in and rest. And I think the property owner failed the responsibility. They didn't really do a really good job. So I'm not here to against the 7-Eleven to sell the alcohol, but if they sell the alcohol, then we are afraid of our safety, the people who walk into the aisle between our backyard and the property and drink there and have drunk there. So we really have a concern for our safety in the late night. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and speaking. Do we have any other public comments?
That concludes our public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back up here. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? Vice Chair Standard, go ahead.
The city first. For the requirement of this late-night requires two employees during a certain period of time, what is the purpose of that requirement? What's the logic behind it?
So when the city adopted the late-night use definition and the associated use permit requirement, we had worked closely with the Orange County Sheriff's Department with the first late-night uses that we had gotten and worked on hashing out some conditions that we would typically utilize, and that was one of them that we had utilized for pretty much all of the late-night use permits that have come before us. So that includes things like Planet Fitness, the Wendy's drive-thru, and I think the Shell mini-mart down on Lake Forest in Rockfield. So it was just a standard condition that had always been done to just try to maintain some security so that way if the employee had to take a break, that there would be another employee to cover, something along those lines, just so there wasn't just one person there. But there is no specific code requirement or policy that's been adopted requiring that condition. It's just a matter of standard practice.
Okay, speaking of the standard practice, are there other 24 hours? You just mentioned the other 24 hours. Are they, do they all have the requirement to have two employees during that period of time? There was, excuse me, real quickly, I'm sorry. There was a reference to it being a new business or a new use permit, and that's why this was being imposed. But are there other businesses? Are they under the same restriction?
So the ones that have an approved use permit for a late-night use do have that condition included as well.
Thank you. In the late night, just one clarification here. The late-night hours has nothing to do with alcohol sales specifically? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can we get the gentleman back up? Are you good with that?
Okay, can the applicant return to the podium, please? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. A couple of quick questions. Assuming that the use permits are allowed, or given, are there going to be any changes? You mentioned that there were cameras on 20-some-odd cameras, I believe, on site. And are there any additions planned? I'm going to tell you the reason for my question. The gentleman that was up here in one of the letters that we received, and I don't know if they're related or not, spoke specifically to the area behind the 7-Eleven, where it's in between the wall, between the property owners, and then there's a dirt parcel or dirt patch that leads up to the building. And I drove, I also visited the site today a couple of times, and in the back of the, there's a gate on one side, and there is not a gate on the street side. So on the parking lot side, there's a gate that blocks that off, but on the street side, there's not a gate. And there's no cameras in the back of the store. There's a light back there. So there's a lot of cameras on the front of the store, inside the store. As you're facing the store, on the left side of the store, there's one by the man door there. And on the right-hand side, there's no cameras on the right-hand side, and there's no cameras on the back. So loitering is one of the concerns that the residents had, and safety there. So we have an open area on one side, no cameras back there, and signs of loitering. When I was there today, there were cans, empty cans, empty alcohol cans, and energy drinks for that matter. But is that, are there any additional cameras or ways that, or, excuse me, or ways that you're going to look to mitigate that issue? Because when I'm there and I look, I can stand in that parcel because it is above, excuse me, the wall is lower than and it's higher than the elevation of the houses, and you can look straight into those backyards. And that appeared to me to be a challenge. So I was just curious what the plans were in addressing that, or if there were any.
A great idea. I can tell you that we can absolutely dive into that, and we would agree to an additional condition that makes clear that the applicant shall install additional security cameras and lighting, if necessary, to the satisfaction of planning and the police department. Sometimes we see conditions like that in CUPs that obligate the applicant to do something, but then there's a process to verify that staff is actually happy with it, and we would agree to that condition. I actually, I've been to that store many times. I admit to you, I have not walked around the back. I just did not see that or understand that that was a concern. But if it's a concern, we'll commit to doing whatever it takes to make it better.
Thank you. I also, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you mentioning the lights and the cameras, which is wonderful. But I would also ask that a consideration be for that side fence as well that is on the street side, because that's not blocked. And that's how people can access that for the loitering aspect.
For additional fencing?
Yeah.
If it's, if it's...
If it's, I mean, just for discussion and being open to it.
Sure. If it's on our property and we have the ability to put up the fence, we'll do it.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Vero.
Thank you, Chair. A question for staff. Have we, do we have any record of calls for service in the last couple of years at the location?
So as part of the application package, we did route it to the Orange County Sheriff's Department for the chief of police to review. Specifically at this location, they did not indicate that there were calls for service, you know, going specifically with the PCN it talks about for alcohol sales. Within this exact census tract, they had indicated that there were zero calls for service relating to any alcohol concerns and that any reported crimes within their reporting area was about at 8%. So they didn't single out the specific business for any calls for service and within our own code enforcement side of things. Within our own system, I didn't see any active code cases or recent code cases specific to this location.
You know, for staff, I have a hard time looking at this item, especially with the late-night uses, without having an understanding of the calls for service that are at the location to see if police does respond out there. Is it a weekly? Is it a daily? Is there theft? Is there issues that occur? Not just necessarily with alcohol, but specific to calls for service. That's something, that's a challenge for me without having that information. That's a key fact for me. I think it's also, on the comment that Vice Chair Standard made in regards to the back, regardless of what goes forward, staff, I'd like to maybe see if SEP Ted could go out there and see what opportunities there are to mitigate that environment that's behind the business and have a partnership to see how we can remedy that regardless of what the decisions are today. I think that would benefit the residents and the business itself, too. Regarding to the track record, we had somebody send in a comment. I believe she was the neighbor on the street behind, and she brought up the officer that was killed in the parking lot of this location in 1999, murdered by a gentleman that had an AK-47 that shot the deputy 12 times in the parking lot. It's a terrible situation. It's not easy to bring it back up, but I would not be in favor of not having less than two employees on duty in the middle of the night for safety. That additional individual could have had some involvement potentially to change that situation rather than one individual there. And I could not be supportive of anything that's not of that like. And that's all.
Commissioner Vero.
Could I have the applicant back up for a question? Sorry to make you. Could you just elaborate one more time for us on that second alternative you had said for the requirement of two employees? So you said, if we keep it to one employee, you would be willing to stop at midnight. And then what was the second alternative? You said if we were going to keep the two, then keep the option to... Could you just elaborate on that again for me?
Sure. And by the way, staff did not share with us the opposition emails. So we did not, we just can't respond to whatever is raised because I haven't seen it. I was actually living in Lake Forest from about 98 to 2000 or so, and I thought it was a great place, obviously still a great place. But I don't recall that incident back in 99. But obviously, very, very sorry to hear that. But to answer your question, sir, what I was suggesting was if there was a concern or an inclination from the commission to impose the two-employee requirement, if that, if the security protocols that we talked about and the track record that have been placed, if that's not satisfactory, we could also agree, if the commission was favorable to it, to stop alcohol sales at 12:00 midnight, if that would make a difference. If, you know, if it turns out that the commission is determined to impose the two-employee requirement, we'll do our best, and talking with the franchisee, we think we can do it and that it will pencil out. I'm just asking if some language can be added to the resolution for the 24-hour use, which is similar to the language for the alcohol resolution that makes clear that it's actually tied to this application, which is obtaining a type 21 liquor license. And that just simply gives us an opportunity. Lake Forest does not have a process where you can withdraw an application. I don't want to do that. We've come a long way. I'm telling you, I think we can live with it. But if in a week from now, it turns out, and we run the numbers and we think this is just not going to work, I just want them to have a way to keep the status quo. That's all.
I see.
So tie the 24-hour resolution to obtaining a type 21 license, which we haven't done yet. We have an application in, but it's not done.
I have one question for clarification. So assuming that you do stop alcohol sales at midnight, when would they resume?
I beg your pardon?
Assuming that the alcohol sales stop at midnight, that's one of your proposals, correct, or potential solutions?
Yes.
When would they resume? What time would they resume? During what period of time would they not sell alcohol at the store?
They would resume under the state law at 6:00 a.m.
6:00 a.m., thank you.
The state restricts alcohol sales between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. I can tell you as a practical matter, the franchisee, he's already made a decision. I never see this from franchisees, quite frankly. He's already been cutting off the alcohol sales at 1:00 a.m., which he's not required to do.
Understood.
It's just a business decision he made.
Thank you. So it would be from midnight to 6:00 if it was expanded by those two different, those two hours? That's what I was wanting, their clarification under two hours.
Yes, sir. We would lose two hours of alcohol sales.
Thank you.
I guess I'm curious why the stopping the sales of alcohol between midnight and 5:00 affects the security of your employee. I'm not quite sure I understand what the connection is there. Could you elaborate on that?
Well, from, I think, from a, from my perspective, from an application standpoint, we're not changing anything with the 24-hour use. We've had 24-hour use all along, but because we... We've had 24-hour use all along, but because we filed an application to upgrade our alcohol license, we trigger this new requirement for a use permit for a use that we already have. So I was looking at it as if we can stop the alcohol sales so that they don't cross over into the late-night hours where two employees would be required, then maybe we don't implicate a use permit, and I talked to staff about this, I made the pitch, maybe we don't need a use permit for 24-hour use because we're not doing anything to change the nature of this business between 12:00 midnight and 6:00 a.m. If it's not persuasive and it doesn't matter to the Commission, then, you know, we're okay with continuing to have the option of selling alcohol past midnight. I just thought, you know, and from the franchisee's perspective, and again, I don't hear this from franchisees, his perspective was maybe I don't really want to sell alcohol past midnight because, you know, sometimes, you know, bad decisions get made after midnight, you know? And so it was really just for us to try to be a good citizen and offer something else that might be important, that might help.
What do you do in terms of security? I mean, you mentioned the cameras and the panic button. Well, that's standard in most stores. What do you do specifically at 7-Eleven to protect your employees in the middle of the night? What do you do in the store when they need to go to lunch or take a break, which is required by the state? Who runs the store when they go on break or take a lunch?
I can have the franchisee speak to those issues. I can tell you that 7-Eleven is a corporation. They have a training that's required of all employees that covers security and loss prevention and how to deal with customers and how to respond to incidents. That's required of every employee, but the franchisee can talk specifically about what happens if an employee needs a break or things like that.
No, because I think that's critical to the issue of whether we allow you to have one employee or not. What happens? I mean, who's watching the store when they take a lunch or go on break?
What he's asking is what if the employee needs a break or needs to go to the bathroom or something like that?
Late night?
Late night, yeah. Between 12:00 and 5:00 a.m.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners, staff members. Good evening, everybody. To answer this question very simply here, our normal process in the late night, anytime during the day up to 10 o'clock, we have two members in the store over there. We've got two staff members. So anytime after 10:00 p.m. here, if the staff needs to go to the bathroom or the restroom over there, we usually close the store from the front door, lock the door, five minutes, 10 minutes, let the guy finish his things, and then we come back and open. That's the normal process we follow when the employee has to go for restroom over there late night.
What about lunch?
Sorry, lunchtime in the afternoon, we have two employees, so they alternate. They cover them over there.
What about lunch in the middle of the night?
Night, he usually has his dinner at about 8:00 o'clock and then he doesn't eat anything. So usually the employees, you know, the two employees are there till 10:00 in the night. The evening guy takes his dinner at 8:00 over there and then at 10:00, the guy leaves. But from 10:00 to 6:00 in the morning, if the guy has to go to the restroom, we usually lock the front door, five minutes, 10 minutes, and then he takes his break and then come back and open the door. That's the normal process we follow at the store.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can you give me, it's the 7-Eleven representative, how often has that store been robbed in the past five years?
Sorry, sir?
How often has that 7-Eleven store been robbed or had somebody come in there and try and rough up an employee in the last five years?
So Parvinder, as I mentioned, has only owned the store for January, so he can't speak to those issues.
No, but you've owned the store, you've been franchising the store for a long time. You should know.
I don't know. I didn't receive any calls for service records from the city. I didn't work on this store previously. I could look into that if the case was continued, but I don't normally research law enforcement history when I have a positive recommendation, an indication of no concern from local law enforcement or no other indication that the store is having challenges or problems.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
By the way, I'm not an in-house attorney, just to be clear, for 7-Eleven. I'm an outside attorney, so, you know, I could dig into that data if it was something that the Commission wanted at a later hearing, but I don't have that data at my disposal.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for answering the questions.
Thank you.
Do we have any other commissioners that require, have questions or comments? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution with modification?
I am fine moving with the motion. I still would like to keep the condition that we have, two employees required for public safety is recommended by your sheriff in a standard practice. However, I am okay if the attorney approves to put that condition of tying the resolution to obtaining the license so that if they decide to pull back, they just continue as is?
Chair and Commissioners, yes, it's part of that. If that's the motion, there could be what we call a section regarding validity, right? So it would say something along the lines of this use permit, 425-5790, that's the one that applies to the late-night use permit, would not be effective unless and until the applicant obtains a type 21 license from ABC.
Okay. And then also adding the conditions that the applicant look into, work with staff to address the issues with the back of the store, including lighting, adding fencing, and adding additional cameras to that area that's been addressed.
I noticed in the report also there was a note that there was trash and other stuff accumulating back there, and I think, Vice Chair, you mentioned the fact that there is a lot of evidence of people leaving stuff back there and that should probably be added as a cleanup issue, too. That that would need to be done so that that's not become an attractive nuisance. Is that a formal motion?
That is my motion, yes.
Do we have a second?
I have a substitute motion that we just move this for 30 days until a future meeting to get some more information in regards for the calls for service so that I can make an informed decision.
Do we have a second for the alternate?
I'll second the alternate.
Okay, let's vote.
So will we vote on the substitute motion first?
That's correct.
Who voted on the substitute, correct?
That's correct, Chair.
We're voting on the substitute.
Substitute motion goes first.
The substitute goes first.
And this is to continue?
Yes.
To our next meeting?
The next meeting, correct, okay.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Grable absent.
Okay, and that motion's continued for 30 days. We are down to staff comments. So do we have a, Gail, do you have any comments tonight?
No comments.
Okay. So the attorney, do you have any comments?
No comments, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Barajas, do you have any closing comments?
No comments from me, thank you.
Commissioner Villalobos?
No, sir, thank you.
Vice Chair Standard?
No, thank you.
I'll just make one comment. Thank you to the staff for doing such a good job getting all these projects up to us. And we'll adjourn this meeting now until June the 5th, 2025. Meeting is adjourned.